And the time is now 7:00 PM. I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, July 13th, 2020. Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Razak.
Here.
Ms. Peel.
Here.
Mr. Carubus.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Grover.
Here.
And the board is all present and we have a quorum. Mr. Carubus, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Carubus. A few housekeeping items. And for the public, we will be holding a special meeting on Monday, August 3rd, for the discussion of the school reopening plan. As you can imagine, there will be many nuances and many questions. And we thought that we would have another meeting on August 3rd for the public in order to review the plan and to see if there are any adjustments that are needed. And the next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, August 10th. As you know, Boards of Education are bound by strict provisions by the Open Meeting Act. As Board President, I have determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent due to the pandemic. With the onset of COVID-19, some of the OMA guidelines have been relaxed. Specifically, Board members do not have to be physically present. As a result, video or audio conferencing is allowed. Boards are encouraged to provide video or audio access to meetings in order that the public may monitor the meeting. All other Open Meeting Act requirements remain in place. A quorum of the Board must participate. All meetings must be open to public, except any portion of the meeting that is closed for one or more reasons in the act. The meeting must include an opportunity for public comment. Requirement relating to meeting notices, agendas, and minutes remain applicable. Please know that our Board will continue to meet these requirements in this most difficult time. And now it is time for public comment for non-agenda items. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the Board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the Board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups. And as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from Board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. And as a reminder, this is the first portion of public comment. It's for non-agenda items. Many people signed up. For an agenda item, that public comment will be right before the agenda item. So just as a reminder. Another reminder, since many people are new to this Board meeting probably today, is that we are strict by Board policy to limit public comments for 30 minutes for agenda items and non-agenda items, 30 minutes each. We also are strict with our three-minute timeframe. We have three people who signed up for public comment. But one person wanted to make public comment on curriculum and did not provide their phone number. As a result, we cannot identify that person for public comment. I urge you to contact the Board in regards to your comment. You can contact us at board/members@ipsd.org. Again, I apologize, but we really do need the phone number. I have two other people signed up for public comment for non-agenda items. The first person is Alicia.
Good evening, members of the Board and of the 204 community. I am speaking today about equity in our 204 schools. As some of you know, I grew up in the district. In 1988, my family moved into what was the Georgetown attendance area and what would eventually be the Gomber attendance area. At that time, the district only had a few elementary schools. My parents had left their communities of Gary, Indiana, and the South Side of Chicago in order for their daughters to have educational opportunities they were never able to have. I received an incredible education and ended up buying a home down the street from where I grew up. When I was a teacher in 204, I taught for six years at Kendall and I taught for seven years at Georgetown. I started to notice that while the diversity of cultures was still occurring in the 204 elementary experience, the diversity of income was not. Sixteen percent of 204 student population is low income. There are nine elementary schools whose low-income percentage is 10% or lower. There are two elementary schools whose low-income percentage is 4%. There is one elementary school, Georgetown, whose low-income percentage is 60%. Georgetown has 15 times the low income as the lowest levels occurring in two elementary schools. Georgetown has almost four times the low income as the district average. As a result of systemic racism in our country, low-income students are disproportionately Black and Brown students. Not only is Georgetown segregated by income, but these diminished opportunities are occurring at the elementary school with the highest percentage of both Black and Brown students. How is this equitable? This is not creating more opportunities for future generations. Research tells us Black and Brown students get a better education when they're not segregated. From "Children of the Dream" by Rucker C. Johnson, page 60. Compared to Black children who were not exposed to integration, Black children who were exposed throughout their K-12 years had significantly higher educational attainment, including greater college attendance and completion rates, not to mention attendance at more selective colleges. I am a 204 success story. The district I grew up in and currently reside in should be continuing those success stories. 204 needs to make sure that schools are not segregated by income. In your last school board meeting, you discussed equity statements and stated that the school board should lead by example when it comes to equity. This issue is the responsibility of the school board and the cabinet. I ask that the school board make this issue a high priority that needs to be resolved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Becky. Is Becky with us? Okay, I think it's prudent then to move on with the agenda. And that would be to move to the consent agenda and superintendent report. Before we move to that, I do want to welcome Jeannie Enna, who will help us with our meetings. She is the replacement for Jackie Horvath, and we welcome Jeannie. And of course, it's a pleasure to introduce Dr. Adrian Tally on behalf of the Board and as our next superintendent of Indian Prairie School District. Dr. Tally is an accomplished educator with more than 30 years' experience. He has spent the last five years as an administrator at Prince George County Public Schools outside of Washington, DC, is one of the nation's 25 largest school districts. Before that, Dr. Tally worked for the Department of Defense Agency in Alexandria, Virginia. He oversaw the implementation of $1.9 billion budget and was responsible for the instructional programs in 181 schools. He holds degrees from the University of Virginia, Boston College, and George Washington University. Dr. Tally, welcome to District 204.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I appreciate that tremendously and will provide my comments now, if I may. On this inaugural Board of Education meeting, there's a lot I could say tonight, but I want to start off with saying thank you to each one of you who has sent me an email of welcome or said words of welcome to me when you've seen me. The positive energy that I have felt is not something I take lightly. I appreciate the positivity you have sent me and are sending my way. I second want to thank Dr. Sullivan, our retired superintendent, and all she did to ensure that I would have a smooth beginning. I have been around superintendent transitions in the past, and not all of them have gone smoothly or professionally. Dr. Sullivan's exit and retirement from Indian Prairie is something that should be taught to others. She told me and her actions demonstrated that she is committed to the district and its success and my success. As we continue to traverse within these most extraordinary times due to COVID-19, my team and I are trying our best to ensure stability and consistency within our district. Later tonight, you will hear about our reopening plans. Some highlights I would like to discuss that have taken place or in the process of taking place. On July 4th, I was invited to participate in the Brookdale Community Annual Fourth of July Parade. Mr. Rising was also there with me. We practiced social distancing requirements and drove in our cars. It was a great parade with crowds on either side of the street. It was an excellent example of Americana culture. We have a summer enrichment program starting in four of our schools, McCarty, Georgetown, Gomber, and Collishaw. These summer programs will serve 125 students in grades K to 1 in supporting student literacy and numeracy skills and providing social and emotional learning. We will also conduct driver's ed classes this summer. Due to moving to a virtual program in the spring, we had some students who were not able to do the behind-the-wheels part of driver's ed. And I'm happy to say that we are going to be able to finish their program using guidance we received from the state to ensure their safety. And on Friday afternoon, I talked with a student who's a senior in Nikla High School. Mr. Alexander Dunn was a student with whom I spoke and talked with him, not about just his goals, but the goals of other students for her senior year. It was a very positive conversation, and he was the first student with whom I've spoken. I told him that I would be giving back to him because he offered to gather additional students with whom I could talk and I hope to take him up on that later on. I'm also planning to have some conversations with different parent groups over the next few weeks. Obviously, we're focused on reopening, but I also want to talk about non-COVID items. As part of my entry plan, my goal was and still is to hold listening sessions with different groups, and I'll be working on operationalizing that soon. Because I know we have a lot more to say about reopening, I will end my comments with the following statement. I pledge as your superintendent to give Indian Prairie my full energy to ensure our continued success. Back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Tally. If we can, I've been informed that the telephone number was provided. Being a little bit unconventional, we will go back to public comment for non-agenda items if I can. And so, is Gina available to make public comment? Well, perhaps not. And I look forward to getting back to meetings in person. It makes it a whole bunch easier. We are now going to... Our consent agenda item, please identify yourself as you make your motion or second. I need a motion for the approval of consent agenda items D through I as presented.
This is Lori Donahue. I move that the Board approves consent agenda items D through I as presented.
I do have a motion. Is there a second?
This is Kathy, second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Jeannie, please call the roll.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Ms. Peel.
Aye.
Mr. Razak.
Aye.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. That's we move to our action items. And please identify yourself as you make your motion or second. I need a motion to approve the athletic training curriculum materials as presented.
Mark Rising, I'll make a motion to approve the athletic training curriculum materials as presented.
Do I have a second?
This is Natasha Grover, a second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Dr. Tally is Grant with us today?
Grant is on, he should be on the line. Grant, are you there to add any discussion to this piece? If he is not, the only thing I'll add is this is materials to support our athletic training curriculum materials that we need to purchase. And this is Fundamentals of Athletic Training, provides the most comprehensive overview of the athletic training and sports medicine field. It's a full suite of digital presentation materials is included with the purchase of the text. The district purchase of classroom sets also includes permission to post the text in a Google Classroom. The cost is, as noted, $9,741.60.
Thank you, Dr. Tally. Any questions or comments from the Board? Hearing none, Jeannie, please call the roll.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Peel.
Aye.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Mr. Razak.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. Our second action item is a motion to approve Policy 2:240, Board Policy Development as Presented. Please identify yourself, and I need a motion.
This is Demming, and I request that we approve Policy 2:240, Board Policy Development as presented.
There is a motion. Do I have a second?
This is Lori, I'll second.
Okay, Dr. Tally.
Yes. So let me explain very quickly here. As we know, policy is made by the Board, and whenever we need to modify the policy, we should come back to the Board for that modification to take place. However, there are occasions, COVID-19 is a prime example, when we have emergencies which will require us to act with speed and we cannot have a meeting with the Board before we need to change a policy or change parts of the policy. What this request is, is that it will allow the superintendent, when there is an emergency situation, to suspend policy or part of a policy after informing the Board, of course, that this is about to take place. An example of this would be, for example, our Policy 6:240, which is about field trips. It would be a situation where a superintendent and I could suspend the policy regarding field trips because of an emergency situation that may be happening. Or another example would be visitors to the school. As I could suspend part of that due to the fact that we should not have visitors to a building because of the fact of a pandemic happening, as we saw happen this spring and continue happening now. And so, this is a, it allows us to respond quickly, but also requires me to inform the Board that I'm about to do this, and then we can come back and look at this at a regular Board meeting as necessary.
Thank you, Dr. Tally. Questions for Dr. Tally, Board members?
If I may speak, Mike?
Yes, Mr. Carubus.
I definitely am in support of the policy. I think it's important that policy rests with the Board, but we do, in these times, we do need to move fast. So it does need to be temporary, does need to be communicated to the Board so that we can ultimately keep responsibility for the superintendent for the actions. And we need to make sure that changes in policy get communicated out to the community as well. So overall, support of the policy. It's good in these emergency times.
Thank you, Mr. Carubus. Anybody else? Not hearing further discussion, Jeannie, please call the roll.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Ms. Grover. Yes. Okay. Mr. Razak.
Aye.
Ms. Peel.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Now move to our discussion items. Our first discussion item is the draft budget. Mr. Strang will be providing us with our draft budget. Mr. Strang.
Good evening, Mr. President. I'm trying to get my video started.
Mike, if I may speak briefly?
Yes.
I'd like to mention our foundation really quick. IPEF has a great history in the district, and it supports a lot of our extras in the district, also at-risk needs. And it's a great opportunity during registration to make an additional contribution so that you can cross that off your list of stuff to do for the year. It's a, there's a long history of it. It's a supplement. It doesn't take away what tax dollars are used to spend on schools. But if you have it in your heart, in your charity, to make an extra contribution to the schools, doing so at the time of registration is a simple process. So I encourage you to make the donation. You can see some of our Board members have a bunch of paraphernalia on today to be supporting of the foundation. So I encourage all the members that have joined to make it part of their support. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Carubus. Mr. Strang, are you ready?
I am, Mr. Razak. Thank you very much. Good evening, Board members. Tonight is the draft budget. There's no action needed tonight on behalf of the Board of Education, but this is the next step in the development of a final budget, which we will ask you to approve in September. This is step one of three. In August, we will ask you to approve a tentative budget. Tonight, we'll talk about District Goal Three, some of the impact of COVID-19 adjustments as we went into the spring, some information about our comparable districts, which you have all seen before, but is important to note when we reach difficult economic times. You've all asked about the CARES grant expenditures from time to time, so I'd like to talk about the grant and where those funds are being allocated. And then Mr. Shipley is joining me tonight, and he will go over the operating funds and non-operating funds as well. Next slide, please. So Board Goal Three, District Goal Three is to manage our resources efficiently and effectively, and by June 30th, which is the end of our fiscal year, to reach Financial Profile Designation of Recognition, which is the highest financial profile designation. We've met that designation every year with the exception of times when the Board of Education has requested us to go into deficit spending because of special need, whether it's safety and security or the installation of elementary air conditioning. We've never gone into deficit spending unannounced or unplanned, and that is a major player in whether or not we make recognition. We anticipate that we'll make recognition for fiscal year 20, which just ended, and our auditors are in the district now. They've got their preliminary paperwork, and we'll be back in August and September. The budget that you approved last September stated that we would have a $1.7 million excess at the end of the year, which is about a third, 0.3% of the entire budget. In March, when COVID-19 hit, the budget kind of went a little haywire like everything else did. We stopped doing some things and began doing other things. So on the expenditure side, we saw less expenditures in the area of transportation, roughly 25% less, as we quit transporting students back and forth from school and moved to a model where we distributed meals and learning supplies to our students at the buildings throughout the district. We stopped expenditures in the area of consumables, items to support face-to-face coursework, printing and paper and things of the like. We saved money in substitute expenses and benefits and saw a reduction in expenditures in hourly staff. And we saw savings in our health insurance benefits. Primarily, what we saw was that we didn't have elective surgeries as hospitals discontinued that service, and we suspect that our staff members and folks on our health insurance plan were not going to the doctor for the typical checkups while COVID-19 was in session. We are starting to see a transition back to normal in our health benefits this month. What you'll see later in this budget is that we also expect to see recognition in our fiscal year 21 budget with an excess of just over $946,000. Some interesting things that occurred on the expense side and the loss in revenue was that we saw a loss in fees as we returned fees for fourth-quarter field trips, classes, events. We saw a need for expenditures in the area of personal protective equipment and gowns, face shields, masks, gloves, hand sanitizers, and thermometers. And as today, we have not received our fourth of four categorical payments from the state of Illinois, which is $2 million. state of Illinois, which is $2 million in revenue that we hope to receive before the end of August. Next slide, please. We're a very lean school district, and you know that. We rely on the state of Illinois more than our comparable districts, and we rely on our tax base as much as any school district in the state. One thing that's important to note is that we are a heavily residential school district. What that means is that our property values predominantly come from homes, and homes typically bring children. If we had a larger business or industry in the school district, we'd see more revenue in those areas, and they wouldn't generate students. So we'd be a great school district for an Amazon distribution center, and that would really help our tax base. But when you look at our EAV per pupil, our property value per pupil, you can see we've got $194,192 in property value per pupil, which is less than all of our comparable districts, and even less than the state average. So the work that we did with the city of Aurora and coming to an intergovernmental agreement on tax and equipment financing really helped us out as a school district. And I think that we will not lose ground in that area as a result of that work. Next slide, please. When you're a lean school district and your revenues are lighter than your comparable districts, you need to spend less than your comparable districts. So our operating expenditure per pupil is $12,128 per pupil, less than our comparable districts and less than the state of Illinois average. How do you do that? Larger class sizes, larger administrator to pupil ratios. A matter of fact, we actually spent 25% less per pupil than the DuPage County Unit School District averages. So we are a very efficient school district. Next slide, please. I worked with Kathy Pease and coordinated with her on the expenditures of our CARES Act, which is to offset some of the expenses associated with COVID-19. We're spending just over $74,000 for at-risk learners. That's to support K-1 summer schools support and reading support for 1,500 second and fifth grade students during the summer. We're spending $292,000 on nursing salary and benefits. That allows us to have a full-time nurse coordinator going into the next school year and finding a replacement to fill her spot servicing schools. And it brings 16 nurses from eight FTE up to full-time and puts them on benefits. So it strengthens our nursing support as we move in to the school year. We've got $45,444 in a grant manager to help support and make sure that this money gets allocated in the same places. That's currently a staff member that's already in the district, and we are just swapping some of her salary out from district funds to grant funds. You can see that we've got personal protective equipment again, and that is for gloves, face shields, masks, hand sanitizer, sanitizer wipes, and any variety of things that would be needed, both in the nurse's office, the main office, with our students, with our staff, and with our custodial maintenance, bus drivers, and food service. Finally, we've got $348,370 in building modifications. That's for building modifications to classrooms, to the central office, to main offices. A good example of that are sneeze guards that have been placed in areas where we're going to interface with the public quite a bit. Then finally, six non-public schools received $12,264 that they received as a part of the grant, which is typical with the Title II grants and the Title I grants. And that money will be expended in ways of their choice. Next slide, please. Mr. Shipley?
Sure. Thanks, Jay. Good evening, board members. We now want to transition into showing the draft budgets, revenues, and expenditures at a high level. And we'll start with this chart, which shows revenues by source for all district funds. The sources and percentages of each revenue are consistent with the prior year and have not changed significantly in many years. As expected, this means that property taxes make up the largest percentage of district revenues at 78%. Just to reiterate, the slides Jay showed a few, a few minutes ago, the district's EAB is the lowest among our comparable districts. And when you're as reliant on property taxes as we are, this puts a lot of pressure on both our taxpayers and on our district operations to operate efficiently. And Jay mentioned earlier, some of the efficiencies that we have, again, compared to some of our comparable districts throughout county. Second largest source of revenue is the state of Illinois, but that makes up just 14% of total revenues, and that's split between two sources. The first is evidence-based funding, which represents 11% of total revenues, and our mandated categorical payments make up the other 3%. As Jay had covered last month, this budget is based on Governor Pritzker's recently passed budget for the state of Illinois. That budget kept education funding at the same level as the prior year. So while that, while we aren't getting some of the increases that have been promised under the evidence-based funding plan, given the current situation, we consider this to, to be about as good as, as we could have expected. We have budgeted in this, this draft budget a delay in categorical payments, however, so we are only budgeting for three categorical payments in fiscal year 2021 instead of the scheduled four. Even with the CARES grant that has been a big focus recently, and Jay just covered, federal funding still makes up just 3% of our budget. And then the final 5% of other local revenues includes a variety of items, including registration and technology fees, building rental fees, and interest income. A lot of these revenues have been reduced in our current budget as a result of the COVID pandemic. And again, Jay covered some of those reductions earlier. Next slide, please. This slide then shows our revenue as allocated by fund. This includes the six operating funds of the district, as well as the district's two non-operating funds. Similar to the prior side, the allocations here are very consistent with prior years. The largest of the district's fund is our education fund, which receives 79% of the district's total revenue. Operations and maintenance and transportation are the two other main operating funds, and they receive 8% and 4% of total revenues respectively. Debt service, which receives 7% is a non-operating fund, and that pays off the bonds which were used to build our schools through, as we, the district expanded throughout the 1990s and 2000s. This fund accounts for 7% of our revenues. The remaining funds are all smaller, with the IMRF and Social Security Fund representing 2%, and then working cash, tort, and capital projects all represent less than 1% of district revenues. Next slide, please. Moving on to expenditures, we're showing expenditures here by district fund, and these generally align with the revenues that we showed on the prior slide. These allocations are also very consistent with prior years. The education fund is, again, the largest fund with 78% of expenditures. And from this fund is where we expend all our instructional expenditures, such as teacher salaries, support staff and administrative salaries, our staff benefits, student technology, classroom supplies, and extracurricular activities. Operations and maintenance and transportation both represent 6%. Our O&amp;M fund pays our annual custodial contract with Airmark and covers any other building cleaning, maintenance, or repair needs. The transportation fund pays for all busing services, both outsourced contracts with First Student and Richly. The debt service fund pays, pays off all the bonds. This represents 7% of projected expenditures. These expenditures have been at a consistent level for many years and will continue to be at the same level until fiscal year 2027, when the district bonds are finally paid off. And then finally, like the revenues, the remaining funds are all relatively small with our IMRF and Social Security Fund representing 2% of expenditures, capital projects at 1%, and then the working cash and tort fund are both under 1%. Next slide, please. Here's a, a greater level of detail of our six operating funds and the fiscal year 2021 draft budget. You can see, I'll, I'll start at the far right side with the total column. And as Jay mentioned earlier, we are, despite these unprecedented times, we are presenting a draft budget that is balanced, and so we're showing a projected excess of $946,000. In context, that's about 0.25% of revenues, or for every 1,000 revenues we're going to bring in, or projected to bring in next year, we're going to, we have a plan to spend 999 of those dollars. So slight surplus, but about as close to break even as, as you can be. I just wanted to highlight, while looking at the total column, some of the differences from the February 2020 forecast, which we presented to the board just over a month before the COVID-19 pandemic started. So looking at total revenues, we're now presenting a draft budget with just over 365 million in revenues. That's down 6.5 million from what we presented four months ago. Local revenues are down by four, by just about 4 million, and that's a combination of property taxes being down 3 million. That's a, planning for a reduction in the Consumer Price Index, which is tied closely to our total property tax revenues. And then local revenues is also down another million dollars as a result of the reduction of some of those other local revenues we discussed earlier. Interest revenue, building rental revenue, and some of our extracurricular fees and revenues for programs we may not be able to offer in their full capacity this year. We're also showing state revenue down over $2 million from what we projected in the forecast. If you remember, as, as part of the forecast, we were talking about an evidence-based funding increase of about $800,000. At the time, we thought that was the bare minimum the state could, could provide to us, but again, given, given the times, the state's holding funding flat, and I think we're, you know, we're pretty fortunate to be at that level as of now. Because of the CARES grant, the federal income has increased slightly, but again, that does represent such a small portion of our overall budget. The way we've offset those revenue decreases on the expense side is really two main sources. So the first is, is under the capital outlay expenditure class, and specifically in the operations and maintenance fund. So when we presented in February, we proposed splitting our capital expenditures between our operations and maintenance fund and our non-operating fund, the capital projects fund. We've now moved all capital expenditures to the non-operating fund. We don't believe we have the capacity to support capital outlay with our operations and maintenance fund at this time. The second change we have made is we have reduced some discretionary spending, some department budgets, some of the funds that are allocated to our schools for consumables and other, other items as well. That's projected to save about $1 million in next, in this budget. Across funds, you will see, we do have some funds showing excess, and we do have some funds showing slight deficits. However, our focus historically has always been on how the operating funds show in total. And I will point out that even with some of the funds showing deficits, we are projecting positive ending fund balances for all our operating funds. Finally, the fund balances a percent of revenues is 32.46%. This is very consistent with prior years. I know we've had discussions with the board in the past, I believe most recently at the February forecast, about, about that level being on the lower end compared to, to some of our comparable districts. It's, it's probably in, in the range that would be considered appropriate, but it's at the lower end of that range. Next slide, please. So the final, final chart we have here is our draft budget for our two non-operating funds. The first fund is the debt service fund, and as we covered already, this is pretty straightforward and is going to be at a consistent level here in both revenues and expenditures till fiscal year 2027. So I'll take just a minute to focus more on the capital projects fund. And this fund, you'll see, really doesn't bring in a lot of revenue. That local revenue is just some developer impact fees we receive from the, that's passed through both the city of Naperville and city of Aurora, and then some interest income. The, the source of the spending here is really amounts we've transferred into this fund in prior years, amounts we've earned from some land sales and prior investment earnings. And the district made a commitment over the past several years to build up this fund so that we would have it to support capital if we ever did reach a, a difficult budget time. Unfortunately, I think we all know we're in that difficult budget time now. So we are projecting to spend $3 million out of these, out of this capital project fund. And again, that's, that's money that previously we would have supported at least partially with our operating funds. This number, 3 million, really does represent a bare minimum of capital project expenditures that to service the district. It's well below the $8 million, which the district's facility consultant has recommended we spend annually. So it's really going to be just essential capital projects next year, building envelope issues, roof repairs, emergency projects, things of those, that nature. And the reason, the reason we're not projecting more out of this non-operating fund is really because we don't, we're looking, looking into fiscal year 2022 and on, we continue to see the operating funds being under a lot of budgetary pressure, and so we really need that fund balance to probably last us the next several years. And again, continue to fund some of those capital needs fiscal years 2022. Next slide, please. So with that said, our next steps here is to continue to develop our fiscal year 2021 budget. The schedule is that at the August 10th board meeting, we will present and have the board approve a tentative budget. That tentative budget will be approved after a budget hearing at the September 21st board meeting. The state of Illinois requires us to pass a budget by September 30th, and that budget needs to be posted and available for public comment for at least 30 days prior to that hearing and approval. And so those are really the two requirements that are driving those two dates. As Jay mentioned earlier, we have began finalizing our fiscal year 2020 financial statements, and we'll continue to update the board as those go along. And along with that, we begin our annual audit process. So we will continue to update the board on the audit as that works through in August and September as well. So with that, I believe Jay and I are both available for any questions.
Thank you, gentlemen. Could you, okay, board questions, I'm sorry. Comments, questions, please?
This is Lori. The $2 million categorical payment that you're expecting in the end of August, is that later than we typically would get that payment?
I could take this, Jay. It's not, the, the state of Illinois has historically been late on the categorical payments, and we've reached a point last summer where the state had actually finally caught up. So given that we're going back into a recessionary environment with a lot of budget pressures, we're kind of returning to the, unfortunately, what's been the norm with those categoricals and seeing delays. The state has, I think, spent public, the state started to draw on the Federal Reserve line of credit that was made available to the state. I believe we're the first state to do so, and, and the state that's doing that most aggressively. So it's possible we do see, at least in the shorter medium term, the state making those payments on schedule as it draws on that line. But I, I think our, I think overall, based on our experience with the last recession, we, we do expect to see delays in those categoricals.
And you're assuming only three, right, for the next year's budget?
Correct. So we're, I guess, optimistic that we'll receive that fourth one in fiscal year 2020, and then we'll be, we'll receive three of the four fiscal year 2021 categoricals. That's, that's what we're budgeting as of now.
Yeah. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's good that we have been able to come up with a balanced budget, but it, it is sad that we were finally making progress on some of our maintenance work, and now we have to put that aside, but you've got to do what you have to do these days, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. You others? Mr. Carubis?
Yes. Go to slide six, please. Often, people say that what you spend in a budget evidences your priorities. The allocation from the CARES Act is the additional The allocation from the CARES Act is the additional federal funds that we got as a result of the pandemic. That's how I view it. And if you total up those numbers, it's about 1.1, 1.2. So in the, in a global pandemic, the federal government provided us with an additional $1.1 million on a $364 million budget, which works out to about $40 per student for, for next year. So that shows the priorities from the federal level in supporting education in this district as a result of the pandemic. Now, go to the slide on the budget numbers, please. You, the total state source revenue is $51 million. We had anticipated that being $53 million. And you made a statement that we were fortunate to be held flat at $51 million. So the additional contribution from the state of Illinois to support District 204 in a pandemic was to not cut our budget. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Carubis. Others? I can't see everyone, so please just join in.
Mike, it's Mark.
Okay, Mark.
So if you'd go to slide nine. Remind me again, either Matt or Jay, where, where would we like to be with operations and maintenance based on, you know, when we went out and had our facilities study done and what we should be spending on average for operations and maintenance? What percentage should that be really?
The, the facility study, I think our, our, the focus of that was, is more on the annual capital commitment, which would be about $8 million. That would be, if we spent that out of operations, that number instead of 6% would be closer to 9%. So about 3, 3%.
Okay. So, and, and when we had to go back, when we had in June and had to make the reductions because we're looking at a $3 million local revenue loss for this school year and I believe a $7 million revenue loss, local revenue loss due to COVID for fiscal year 2022. The bulk of that, not all of that, but the bulk of that had to come from all the improvements we were making as kind of Lori referenced that, that came out of the operations and maintenance, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
All right. Thank you. That's all I had.
Ms. Donahue? Anything else? No? Anyone else?
I, I did have a question. Lori, thank you for that because that was, that, one of my questions was exactly what you asked. But can we go back to slide six real quick, please? And I just wanted to highlight, I am so appreciative that the allocation that the, that the team has looked at, that the administration has looked at to really give our support to our students where it's going to be so needed, looking at that, the nurse salary and benefits. Can you just tell me, Matthew, again, what breakout that looks like for the numbers in that area again, please?
Susan, what specifically is your question?
On the nurse salary, the nurse salary and benefits on, Matthew gave us the numbers of where we're, what we're looking at. Can you give those numbers again, please?
I can tell you that on our nurse salaries, we're, we're picking up $85,000 worth of additional salaries to replace our coordinator, to make our coordinator full-time. And we're putting about another $150,000 into bringing 16 nurses who are presently part-time, .8, to 1.0 full-time positions so that they're in our buildings more and we're picking up more of the benefits. The other thing that I want to point out about this CARES grant and the allocation towards our mitigation of COVID-19 is that this is not going to go very far. We're going to end up, through the course of next year, spending additional money to take care of our buildings, our students and our staff. Because this is really a, a small amount of money considering the size of our budget and the size of our district. And we'll be filling the board in with updates regarding that. We've spent, you know, $250,000 out of last year's budget on COVID-19 related items that we never planned on spending on. And so we absolutely expect that we're going to have to react to some situations moving forward and spend some money differently again.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Of course, we have plenty of public comment for our agenda item, opening of schools. We have probably over 30 comments. Again, by policy, 30 minutes is allowed for public comment and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups and such. Ask you, consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and the opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from board members during this meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. If you are unable to share your public comment today because of our time limitation, please email your comment to board-members@ipsd.org. and your comment will be shared with the public. Also, there are a few people who signed up for public comment that need to call in using the phone number provided. If you do not call into that phone number, we are unable to allow you to provide public comment. If you're able to give your comment in less than three minutes, that would be appreciated. It will allow for more public comment and opportunity for people to participate. I'm going to call people by name and by the, by how they signed up and the order that they signed up. So our first public comment for the agenda item, opening of schools, is Millenia S.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Should I start?
Yes, ma'am.
"Thank you to the board for allowing parents to have input into what is for my family our number one priority, our kids' education. Our family and an overwhelming majority of families are expecting that our children will be going back to school. Before I state my reasoning, I'd like to add that the district should also have a distance learning option like many districts are doing around the country for those families that would like to keep their kids home. Although I applaud the district and educators for doing their best during unprecedented times this past spring, frankly, e-learning was a waste of time. My children attend Crone and Niqua, two outstanding, highly competitive academic institutions. The standard that was applied when we switched to remote learning was to the less-than-average student at best. My children are extremely hard-working students and my high schooler takes honors AP courses in conjunction with some regular courses. Both of my children felt that there was tremendous regression in their education over the last few months of school, regardless of class difficulty. There was zero challenge and very little work to be done. I do not believe any standard that would be in place for remote learning will ever match the academic rigor that a face-to-face with a teacher in a classroom daily will achieve. My older daughter will be a junior and my younger one is going into seventh grade. I am certain that e-learning and/or a hybrid model for attending school will in no way prepare them for college and high school in two short years. I don't want to gamble with their futures and that is what would occur if they are out of school. Outside of academics, my children, along with most, need the social environment that only face-to-face education can provide, not only for the confidence it instills in them, but most importantly, their mental health. This pandemic has created a tremendous amount of depression and anxiety among kids. And they need to get back to their new normal where they are surrounded by their friends and teachers. The AAP has stated that kids must return to school for a multitude of physical and mental reasons. These are physicians who are making these suggestions. I believe that teachers are absolutely essential workers. Every day, many people go to work with the population, from police officers to retail workers to waitresses to grocery store clerks, et cetera. They all deal with the public, just like teachers do, and they should. I fully support the use of whatever PPE is necessary to make the return to school happen for both children and teachers, the same way that I support it for all other workers. Teachers are not an exempt class from being around the population. We chose to relocate our family to District 204 and pay some of the highest taxes in the nation because of the world-class schools. What we received in the spring for understandable reasons certainly did not deliver on our expectations. We are insisting that our children return to school this fall as the negative ramifications of any other option by far outweigh the very little risk that any illness poses to children according to the physicians of the AAP."
Mr. Isaac, the speaker's time is up.
Okay, Millenia, can you finish with one sentence, please? Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Jan K.
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jan Kendrick and my son is a rising second grader at Maywatt Elementary. My son has an IEP. IEPs are by definition individualized education plans. And they are in place because we know that one size does not fit all and not all kids learn the same way. IEPs ensure that equitable educational opportunities are provided to all students. Although the COVID-19 pandemic presents unprecedented challenges to educating our children, it does not negate the need for accommodations for IEPs. If anything, it exacerbates the issue. As you consider plans for the upcoming school year, you must consider the individual needs of kids with IEPs separately from the general student population. My child is only one example, but I know for him, he needs to be face-to-face in school full-time with a structured, predictable schedule where we, he has in-person access to his special education teacher, therapist, social worker and support staff. As his mother, I'm the best person to love my child, but I'm not the best person to teach him or provide these specialized supports, even under the remote guidance of the specialist. We tried this in the spring and it did not work for my son. Before school closed, he was thriving due to the excellent instruction of his special education teacher and his work with the support staff. But that fell apart quickly with remote learning. IEPs mean that kids' individual needs matter, even in a pandemic. My request to the school board is that when determining the schedule for the upcoming school year, kids with IEPs be treated individually. If necessary, a meeting between the staff and parents should take place to agree upon what educational environment is best for that student. In conclusion, I know that planning for this year has been extremely difficult and I want to thank you all for your thoughtful consideration of all the issues surrounding these decisions. And to our teachers and staff, we see you and we thank you. We're in this together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jan. Next speaker is Ben W.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your service through your tough times. And we understand that everyone making these decisions will certainly be wrong. Not, and that's just because hindsight is always 20/20. I am speaking as an educator of 15 years and I would like to talk about coming back to school as everyone else is. I have some questions about students. When you're developing these plans, I would appreciate that the students understand the accountability that they'll be having for wearing masks. Kids will be kids. Kids always take the, always push the boundaries. They're always trying to find where the limits are. But we need to make sure that the administrators and the teachers know where those limits are and that the teachers are supported by the administration enforcing those rules so the students cannot harm the other students. I also have questions about specials. How are the specials going to look? Whether it's choir or band or music or even going to the library PE? When we're, when you're creating these things, how will these look with, with the other students? Those are places where students are consistently sharing, getting close together, doing all these things. Those concern me. I would also like to say that developing your plan on August 3rd and announcing it seems very, very late to me. And for a school's coming into session, we need to make sure that, that people can plan for, you know, if they need to move classrooms or even if they need to plan for other daycare situations. If it is going to be a blended model, how are those, how are their kids going to be taken care of when they have to go to work? And the last thing I want to say is whether we are in remote learning or we are in face-to-face, please, 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 can you make it so that the libraries are able to share and distribute the books to students? We have these phenomenal libraries. We have these phenomenal books. And this is a time to help our students explore these books and they have time to read. We need to make sure that if we are in remote or we're in blended or whatever it is, we are able to distribute the amazing books that we have to those students. Thank you very much and I'll pray for you.
Thank you, Ben. Our next speaker is Lee E.
Hi, everyone. This is Lee Evans. I'm a parent of three children attending school in, in the district. I have one at, one at Nico, two at Crone. I just want to talk about the guidance that's being provided by the state of Illinois as it relates to social distancing with the guidelines including, you know, multiple times that students, students remain six feet apart as much as possible. Very concerned about how the term "as much as possible" may be interpreted at our local level. Phase 4 guidance allows up to 50 individuals to gather in one space, which could mean that doing, when, that when doing so, students are less than six feet apart. It's my request to the board, they have the criteria identified for allowing students to be less than six feet apart. For example, although the capacity of buses used in transporting our students will be reduced by, let's say, X%, students will likely be three to six feet apart given the number of buses we have available during the start and end of the school day. If we were to maintain a six-foot distance when transporting all students, it would require X% more buses, drivers during the beginning and end of day. Having some kind of explanation would really be helpful to us as parents attempting to explain to students why the six-foot social distancing guidelines may not apply in school. While at the local grocery store, the six-foot social distancing rule does apply. Another item is also, I, I understand the frustration with the e-learning earlier this year. But I think if we invested the time and energy into developing a true remote curriculum, just as we did with, when the curriculum updated recently in the last five years, I think we'd have more success. I really feel that our teachers were thrown into the deep end very quickly with not a lot of guidance as to how to implement and how to transition their curriculum into an online learning environment. So I would say, you know, please, train the teachers, give them time to prepare so that they can actually make an effective and engaging online curriculum instead of just saying, "Let's do our regular school day online." There's a big difference and it's hard to engage students when they're doing the same thing remotely. There's different ways to engage a student remotely. I think a lot of people work from home and it's, they'll probably find that true at home in their regular jobs and our students are the same way. Thanks very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Lee. Our next speaker is Mania G. Okay, I think we will move on. Our next speaker is Karen Z.
Mike, do you want to remind people to unmute themselves?
Yes. Thank you, Kathy.
My apologies, Mike, for stepping in and responding. We have, this participant has an older version of Zoom, which doesn't support participation by voice, so I would ask if this specific participant, Karen, can call into the board meeting, please? Instead of using the Zoom client, we'd be glad to do that. So, Mike, if you wouldn't mind proceeding to number nine, please?
Okay, great. So our next speaker will be Ben.
Yes, hi, are you there?
Yes, yes, welcome, Ben.
Yes, hello. First of all, I want to thank you all for listening to the comments, and I'm going to read you an email that I'm going to be sending out. Educational members, this is a documental letter informing all who are involved in setting the Indian Prairie 204 District Recommendation Guidelines for my children who attend school. I'm writing with deep concerns over the regulations that are circulating about children wearing masks and having their temperatures checked, all being picked up on the bus and while attending our district schools. I'm sure I'm not the first to show concerns over these potential restrictions and the harmful effects over disclosing any medical issues that are protected by HIPAA laws and legality that schools will face in trying to invade anyone's medical background by trying to enforce a doctor's note. I have paid hundreds of thousands of my taxpayer dollars to these schools to ensure that my children get the best education possible, and I refuse to have their rights to attend school without wearing distractive and harmful masks that are useless against any disease in order to get the education that I've already paid for a tenfold. I appreciate all of those who take their time to educate, and especially the awesome educators who are in our district. Bottom line is, my children will attend school this fall full-time and in-person without disclosing any of their medical background, as these are protected by laws that were put in place for situations such as this, and this includes wearing masks, temperature checks, et cetera. Also, I'd like to point out that Illinois State Representative Darren Bailey and attorney Tom DeVore, his lawyer, won a recent case that included all of Illinois against Governor Pritzker, saying he overstepped his authority when he extended his emergency declaration past 30 days. This means that all restrictions as of April 9th of 2020 never existed. My children will go to school full-time without any restrictions, because who will watch my children when I'm at work if these restrictions are recommended? Who will pay for someone to watch them the remainder of the time I cannot be there during the school day? If my children go to half of the school year, then should we only pay half of the taxes that go towards the schools? There will be many lawsuits against the school districts if these limits aren't imposed. I'd also like to state that there's an ongoing lawsuit against the Illinois School Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Public Health that includes, you know, that it's about children wearing masks in school, temperature checks, limited attendance in school, and that's it.
The speaker's time is up.
Okay, thank you, Ben, thank you. I think, is Karen available? Karen Z.
She dropped from the call again, Mike, I apologize. We had her queued up, but she has dropped from the presentation again.
Thank you. Our next-
Oh, wait, no, Mike, I apologize, I apologize. She just came back in, my apologies for interrupting you.
No problem. Karen.
Good evening. Sorry about that. I come here tonight as a representative of the leadership of the Parent Diversity Advisory Council, PDAC. Our mission is to advance District 204's commitment to equity and educational excellence. This summer, we have seen protests throughout the country challenging us to examine our biases and combat systemic racism. As the school year begins, we hope to focus on these issues and solutions for our district. As parents, we try to look at situations through an equity lens. The return to school under the pandemic is an extraordinarily difficult problem. As parents, we are concerned for the safety of our children. As community members, we're concerned for the safety of teachers and staff. In any plan that includes returning to school in person, we want to make sure that students, teachers, and staff have the resources they need equitably throughout the district to keep themselves safe. We also are very aware of many children whose parents have contacted us regarding the special needs of their children. We appreciate the need for masking as a way to keep everyone safe. However, we want to make sure that students who are unable to wear masks due to health reasons are able to access our curriculum in a full and meaningful way. Anecdotally, we've heard from many parents of special needs children that remote learning was very challenging for their students. We urge the board to find creative ways to offer direct services to special needs families who need remote learning. Across the district, our students come to us from various socioeconomic backgrounds. We appreciate that the district continues to offer technology resources so that all students can participate in remote learning. We realize that any plan that includes substantial remote learning may have a disparate impact on lower socioeconomic background families. We urge the board to think about creative ways to offer resources, including tutoring or aftercare for students who may have less resources within their homes, or regular phone and video outreach to students and families from teachers and support staff. We also would like to hear more from the district about how they will monitor the progress and attendance of remote families across the district, and we want to know the demographics of how families decide to participate in remote or hybrid options. Lastly, we're greatly concerned about the health impact and want to ensure that all families feel safe sending their children, if they choose to send their children in person, and if they do not send in person, to feel secure that their children are receiving an equitable education. We know these are difficult challenges, and we appreciate the thoughtful work to advance the education of students in 204. Now that we are just receiving the plan, we are interested to hear comment from parents in our community to ensure that all voices are heard. Please join PDAC on Thursday by Zoom for a community listening session to hear from our families. Info is available via our PDAC Facebook page on how to join us. We ask the board and the superintendent to keep listening to our parents, students, and staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Our next speaker is Deba.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
So, my name is Deba, and my daughter goes to Mediavally High School. She is in senior year. I just want to make sure, and I just want to request the board members that whenever we decided, or whenever the school district decided to close the school, it was on Friday, March 13. In Illinois, we have only 14 cases reported that time and fatality rate of six. Now, we are almost 154,000 total cases with a fatality rate of 8,000. So I just want to make sure, whatever decision is going to be on August 3rd or August 4th, my child is safe, because I'm not a parent who is interested to send my kid or send my daughter if there is so many, you know, risk factor involved. Today, even all the healthcare workers who are working day and night, they are in high risk, right? They are using all the protective equipment, they are using masks, so I'm not at all comfortable to send my daughter. So whatever decision a board member is taking, at least the parents like me, they should have the opportunity to continue with e-learning for the rest of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Deba. Our next speaker is Anna. Mike, she's muted. Anna, you're muted. Okay, I'm going to move to the next speaker, but I will try to get back to Anna. So our next speaker is Barsha.
Mike, Barsha is no longer in the board meeting at this time, so we can continue to the next person on the list, please?
Okay, thank you. And our next speaker then will be Jamie C.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Welcome, Jamie. Jamie, you can begin your public comment.
Okay, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to thank the committee and committee members that have worked very diligently on developing this plan. I wanted to bring to light a thought that came to my attention after I filled out the survey for teachers that I believe is highly important but was not addressed in any of the survey questions. I recently read an article by Benjamin P. Linus, who is an epidemiologist and father grappling with concerns, anxiety, and questions regarding opening schools in the fall. He states in his article the following, and I quote, "Unfortunately for all of us, we are making a decision with significant uncertainty about all the risks involved. If we are going to open safely in the fall, we must have the capacity to know quickly when an outbreak occurs. That seems straightforward, but it is not. The community does not yet have adequate testing, contact tracing, or isolation. Schools currently have nothing. It requires building a new capacity in schools for testing and contact tracing. It requires a budget. It requires a formal plan. Ideally, that budget should come from the federal government and be directed to states and ultimately school districts as part of the national COVID-19 testing strategy. Realistically, given the lack of any such national plan, the funds need to come from individual states. Building such infrastructure comes at a cost, and many districts are already facing budget shortfalls. Districts that rely on only their existing testing infrastructure will not have the real-time information that they need to make good decisions. Imagine a child has a fever or cough in October and is told by the school to call a doctor for a COVID-19 test. Results are typically returned in two days to the doctor's office. After another day or two, the data might make it to the school district. So it will take at least four to five days for the district to have any information. We need testing within the school system to shorten the delay at every step of the process and reduce the turnaround time for the test to only one day. With that kind of time resolution, we can increase awareness of the situation at our schools, along with the ability to react appropriately. Without it, we are flying blind and gambling with the health of our children, teachers, and community. We can be wrong about opening schools, but we cannot afford to wait to find out for certain. We need school-based COVID-19 system screening, testing, contact tracing, and isolation. Opening without a plan to test is irresponsible and a gamble with our children's health. Thank you."
Thank you, Jamie. Our next speaker is Sachin S.
Yeah, hi.
Hello.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes. You can begin-
Hi, good evening. Good evening, members of the board, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Sachin Sharma, and I'm a parent of two kids in the school district. As the district considers the various options to reopen schools, I'd like to emphasize the need for continued remote learning for high-risk children with pre-existing conditions, especially those under 504 plans. This is to ensure their safety and soundness in these unsafe times. Also, if some families were to exercise this option, the school district should ensure equal learning advancement for children in these families. This will require creative ways to make the remote learning programs more effective and enriching, including the need to keep the kids challenged, to ensure continued social interaction, to ensure active participation in the class activities, and to address any other aspects that are part of a face-to-face learning. This will be in line with the key principle of our educators and school district, which is to ensure equal education impact for our children while ensuring their health and safety. Thank you for your services to manage the continued education of our children in these difficult and challenging times.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shandra A. Shandra, you can begin public comment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, hello, thank you for giving us an opportunity to speak on this very important topic. I'm a parent of two kids, one of them goes to third grade at Brooks and the other to seventh grade at Granger. While we are completely understanding that every family has distinct needs and opinions with regards to in-person reopening this fall, we request the board to consider offering options to the parents to keep our kids at home for the parents that are able to do so. We are extremely concerned about the challenges that would be presented in order to social distance students, especially elementary kids. Among other things, we are concerned about what the plans might be if one of the students got sick. Would the entire building be shut down? Would all the kids and their families have to get tested? There are so many practical items here that are unknown at this point, and we are concerned about all the unknowns and sending our kids into this. While my kids did decently with the e-learning in March, and the teachers did a wonderful job, given the limited time they had to prepare for this scenario, there is an opportunity for the school district to invest some resources to make the e-learning experience better this fall. If the children are given an opportunity and a choice to stay home, these are unprecedented circumstances, and there is a lot we do not know about the virus. For parents like me, who are able to keep the kids at home this fall and are extremely nervous about putting our kids and families in harm's way, we would request the board to strongly consider providing an option for remote learning this upcoming school year. Thank you."
Thank you. I think we're reaching the end of our 30 minutes. I have time for one more speaker, and that speaker is Asha T.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, Asha.
All right, I'm the last one to go here, because I did not want to miss the chance again. My name is Asha Taluva. I have two children going into incoming junior student in Wobanzee and then a fourth grader in Fry Elementary. Both my kids have attended school 204 district their entire academic years. I come from a very heavy economic background. My mom is a retired teacher back home in India, and I used to also be very actively participating in school, so I do understand and can relate, and I'm a strong proponent of overall holistic education. However, having said that, I do have one child that is on a 504 plan for medical reasons, and I do not want to risk and have to be a parent to make a choice between either of my children as to who needs to stay home, who needs to go back. I want the decision to be with- I want the decision to be with me, because as a single parent of both my children, I know what is best for my children. With due respect for every parent that wants to send their children back, there is no one-size-fits-all, like the other parents who have echoed their thoughts about there is so much unknown about the situation we are in, and in combination with that, the civil unrest that our children went through and witnessed, I don't even know how the board is going to make sure these kids come in, start with a clean slate, clear mind, and be present in a very risky and a contaminated school environment. And I don't say that as a disrespect, but I do not one percent believe that there is a 100% sanitation that can occur and that guarantee has been given to my children. I rest my case, and I again repeat that there is no one-size-fits-all. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Asha. As board policy states, 30 minutes is allowed for public comment. Again, we appreciate everybody that's participating today. We appreciate everyone who has signed up. We are interested in receiving your feedback. If you are unable to share your public comment today, please email your comment to board-members@ipsc.org, and your email comment will be shared with the public. So thank you so much. Now move to the discussion item, which is the opening of schools. Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Mr. Rezak. All across the country, school systems are determining how to bring back children to school safely. Safety is not just for the students, but also for the staff and the community in general. Tonight, we will be presenting our plan for reopening of school. I must emphasize that what is presented is our plan as of July 13, 2020. It's important that you know that this plan is fluid and must respond to ever-changing environmental factors that are presented to us. We have modified what is presented up to the final hour, and will continue to do so after tonight. We have to present a plan so families know our thinking and can make a decision about which option they will take. As a school system, we must respond to requirements that are given to us by the Illinois State Board of Education and the Illinois Health Department. Additionally, we have to engage with the county health department to ensure our plan addresses the medical needs of our community. Similar to how guidance was given to all school systems in March about moving to virtual school, they have given us guidance now about reopening. I also want everyone to know that we in Indian Prairie are not working in isolation. Rather, we are working with our fellow school systems to review our plans and see how more similar we are than dissimilar. Just yesterday, Sunday, the superintendent in the area were texting each other about new guidance that came out recently and how we're going to interpret that guidance. I want to thank everyone who has sent in emails about reopening, who spoke tonight. I want to thank everyone who filled out surveys we requested. All of your comments we reviewed. No plan will meet everyone's needs. However, we think our plan will respond to our community in a very thoughtful and planful manner. I will turn it over to our deputy superintendent, Mr. Doug Ikarius, who will lead us through the plan, though he is presenting the plan as a team effort reflecting the collective thinking of many people in the district. Mr. Ikarius.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Tally, and thank you to the Board of Education for allowing me to present this evening. When we started the 2019-2020 school year, we never anticipated our buildings closing due to a pandemic. We would like to start by saying thank you to our entire community, including staff, students, parents, and community partners for the support that has been shown in trying to navigate this uncharted territory. As a career educator and former middle school math teacher, I never envisioned that we would be in this highly controversial situation about how to return to school. We have been receiving constant emails, some encouraging us to keep students at home until there's a vaccine, while others want to return all students every day without masks or physical distancing. There is no perfect answer, but we will continue to work hard to safely support our students, our staff, and our families. Next slide, please. On June 15, we had presented about the framework we were using, which involved creating a plan for reopening, validating the plan against research and requirements of the Community Health Department and State Board of Education. During that time, we did a lot of research, looking at what other states did, what other countries were doing, what other school districts are doing, and we've had constant conversations to try to interpret the guidance as well as recommendations and requirements. But one of the most important parts of this process is reviewing the plan as it's implemented and modifying as necessary based upon outcomes. As Dr. Tally stated, this is our plan as of July 13, but we know things have changed just within the last few days on guidance that we've received. And so we're basing this, you know, based on the best guidance that we have at this time. Next slide, please. Part of that framework was knowing that a lot of this was guided by public health and that we had four different areas that we were focusing on as we started our committee work. Next slide, please. Those broke down into instructional core and SEL, which includes curriculum, social-emotional well-being for students and staff, school schedules and staff schedules, then looking at all the operations that needed to be in place to make things work with technology and staffing, facilities, maintenance, transportation, food services, and health services. We know the importance of stakeholder communication, our students and families, staff, community partners, Board of Education, and area businesses, as well as the resources to make everything work. Next slide, please. From here, we decided on what goal was going to guide us, and that is to support a comprehensive educational program for the 2020-21 school year within the current guidelines provided by local, state, and federal health and safety officials. Next slide, please. From there, we developed many committees that actually had many subcommittees within those committees. They included facility usage and physical distancing, instruction, health services, technology services, support services, and human resources. We've had over 100 members involved in this committee work, including over 60 Indian Prairie Education Association members. We want to thank everybody for helping, and we know that this work is going to continue to go on as we try to prepare to bring students back on August 20. Next slide, please. As most of you are aware, a lot of what is guided, how both school districts as well as private sectors, what they've done as we've looked at the Restore Illinois Plan. We started with the rapid spread, where we had rapidly increasing cases. We moved to flattening, then to recovery, and we're currently at revitalization. When the state moved to revitalization was around the same time that we received guidance from the state. It has changed slightly since, but that was on June 23, a little less than three weeks ago. And as Dr. Tally has stated, that guidance continues to evolve. We are basing this plan on the assumption that the state of Illinois will still be in Phase 4 on August 20, when students return. Next slide, please. As we worked through the committees, our assumptions were that the virus that causes COVID-19 will remain in circulation until there's a vaccine. That's why we've been informed that we will not move to Phase 4 until there is a vaccine. A second wave of infections is expected, possibly coinciding with flu season. Short-term closures of schools with the need to be on remote learning will remain a possibility, and those with significant health conditions will continue to be especially vulnerable. Next slide, please. So the considerations as we're working through our committee were, how can we plan to prevent the spread of COVID-19? How can facilities be used while adhering to the social distancing requirements? What instructional changes are required? How will transportation be modified? Have we prepared our employees to return? How can we accommodate people who are at high risk or who must self-isolate? What is the impact on students who need the most support? How can we support the mental health of students, staff, and families? And do our decisions empower all students to access educational opportunities? Next slide, please. So on June 23, these are the state requirements that we received. When we receive these from the Illinois State Board of Education, to us, these are considered our non-negotiables. They were clear in their guidance that we require use of face coverings. We prohibit more than 50 individuals from gathering in one space. Require social distancing be observed as much as possible. Require that schools conduct symptom screenings and temperature checks. Require that individuals self-certify that they are free of symptoms before entering school buildings. Require an increase in school-wide cleaning and disinfection. Require an increase in hand washing and hand sanitizing opportunities. Require attendance protocols. Five hours of combined instruction in schoolwork each day. In-person learning as much as possible. And require remote and blended learning options. Next slide, please. An important driver as we looked at how would we bring students back to school was, what happens if a student or teacher tests positive for COVID-19? The Illinois State Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Public Health provided guidance for opening schools and directed school districts to work with local health departments for day-to-day guidance. In matters of public health, the district works closely with and takes direction from the DuPage County Health Department. Following DuPage Health Department guidance, should a positive case occur, the district's health services staff will work with the health department on contact tracing to identify individuals who need to be notified and who will need to self-quarantine and who will need to self-isolate. We recognize circumstances are fluid, which is why it's critical to work closely with the health department. We do feel fortunate that in our district that our nurses, and we have a team of between five and 10 nurses, have actually already completed the John Hopkins certification for contact tracing and are developing protocols and using protocols to try to identify when cases occur and how we handle those situations in working with the health department. Next slide, please. So how can we bring back and keep the most amount of students and staff on campus for learning? For us, that means that we need to provide six feet of physical distance as much as possible. We know that we're going to have an impact on that with classroom capacity and configuration, scheduling, instructional practices, staffing, school operations, and finances. When ISB put out their guidance and we sought clarification on this six-foot of physical distance and how this impacts other students, we wanted to talk about that a little bit. If we have students' desks less than six feet apart from each other, the guidance said if you had six feet, within six feet for 15 minutes or greater, any student who was within that amount or any teacher within that distance would be highly likely to also have to isolate or be quarantined for 14 days. When we have desks apart for those six feet, if we can keep them apart, then we have a better chance of reducing the number of students, other students, who might have to isolate if there is a positive case of COVID-19 with students or staff. When you think about students then who have to transition to other schools, like at middle school or high school, where they might switch classes, if we don't ensure six feet of social distance, we have many more students who could be isolated or quarantined just because they were within six feet of a student who is identified with a positive case. What that would mean is we could have students who come to school, and then they have to miss school for 14 days in a row because they were isolated or quarantined. And so we feel that the best thing that we can do is try to ensure the six feet of physical distancing so we can minimize the number of students who might have to be isolated or quarantined. Next slide, please. That left us with four options on how we can bring back and keep the most amount of students and staff on campus for learning. We can bring back all students every day, but we would need many more classrooms and many more teachers because we would have to be splitting those groups into small class-size amounts. Our classrooms can accommodate an average of about 12 students per classroom, 12 to 15 kind of across our district, where we can still provide six feet of distancing between each student. Second, we could bring back students every day with half attending in the AM and half attending in the PM. Third, we can bring back students on an alternating day schedule. Or fourth, bring back students on an alternating week schedule. We saw those as the options presented before us. Looking at budgets and what it would take both for space, capacity, and staffing to try to bring back all students every day, we did not see as a possibility. And so why, when we sent out the parent surveys, most parents did not see this as an option that they could respond to. So I want to get into the stakeholder feedback. Next slide, please. We asked staff and parents for feedback to help develop our plan. The online survey was made available from July 1 through to July 7. We had 10,611 parent responses and 2,836 staff responses. Next slide, please. In our survey results and options, in-person school on certain days of the week, as example, Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday. On the days that students are not in school, they would be learning from home. We had 29% supporting that option as a first choice with parents and 46% supporting as a second choice. And for staff, 35% as a first choice and 39% as a second choice. Next slide, please. Regarding school, five days a week for either in-person morning or in-person afternoon. So this would be the half-day one. For parents, we had 32% support this option as a first choice and 19% support as a second choice. And for staff, 30% as a first choice and 23% for the second choice. Next slide, please. For in-person school one week and then remote learning at home the next week. We had 15% as a first choice for parents and 29% as a second choice. And for staff, 13% as a first choice and 29% as a second choice. Next slide, please. And in surveying our parents about remote learning at home full-time every day, we had 24% of our parents choose this as a first option with 6% choosing a second option. And for staff, 22% and 8% as a second option. Next slide. We had also asked about face coverings and how important is it for staff and students to wear face coverings. 68% of our parents indicated that this was very important and must be in place, and 72% of our staff indicated this is very important and must be in place. Our next slide was about, we asked staff to best describe their feelings about returning to in-person instruction. We've heard many things across different school districts, different states, different countries about this, and so we wanted to ask our staff how they were feeling about it. And 83% of our staff said they would return to the district plans for in-person instruction. That's how they were feeling. 16% would like to return to work, but only remotely. And then we had less than a percent who stated that they did not plan on returning to work. We've heard from many other districts about a high number of teachers not planning on returning to work based on everything that has been going on related to the pandemic. Our next slide is our return-to-school plan. Parents will have two options that meet state requirements to start the school year based on Illinois and DuPage County remaining in Phase 4 of Restore Illinois. on Illinois and DuPage County remaining in Phase IV of Restore Illinois. We have an A-B-C type of schedule and an online academy. I want to emphasize the word "start." One of the first things we talked about was the importance of evaluating and reevaluating our model. You know, we might go three weeks into the school year and decide that we need to make a change. Maybe we have an opportunity to bring more students in. Or how can we adjust things? But we want to know that we're constantly going to be looking at, is this working or is it not working? As you have seen in the private sector, including professional sports, most places are not returning to normal operations in one fell swoop. In schools, we have to start in a place that keeps our staff and our students as safe as possible while we try to return to in-person learning. We want to try to do what's best for our stakeholders. Next slide, please. Regarding an A-B schedule. In order to reduce the number of students in a classroom, students would be assigned a schedule based on first letter of the last name to receive in-person instruction and remote instruction on select days of the week. Our current thinking is that, we're not sure if it's going to stay called as A-days and B-days, but for the purpose of this evening, under an A-day, Tuesdays and Thursdays, we would have Alpha by Last Name for in-person instruction or remote learning. And then Wednesdays and Fridays, Alpha by Last Name for remote learning or in-person instruction. And then we would have a C-day that we're looking at Monday. We chose Monday as, we have fewer Mondays of student attendance during the school year and thought that it made sense for Mondays. We are still looking at plans for these Mondays of whether it might include additional A or B days that we can get on the calendar or a combination of whole-class remote learning. Would it be an opportunity where we bring the two halves of the class together? Or possible grade-level-specific activities? We might see an opportunity where we could bring freshmen in on that day, you know, to support their transition to the high school. Or we could be bringing in seniors that day because we're looking at, how are we best preparing them for the next level and what guidance do they need? We also know that it could be used for support, student support, students who need additional, you know, support from their teachers or a different, additional support in their coursework. We're trying to look for a plan that gets students back in school but also provides some kind of consistency for parents. We looked at the Alpha's way of doing this so that parents could know that all of their children in the district could be in school on the same days and at home on the same days so that they could better support that situation. Next slide, please. When we look at the A-B-C schedule, we're doing this to ensure that students remain six feet apart as much as possible. Our plan would be for their desks to be six feet apart. We will follow the guidance of making sure that they're facing the same direction and that we look at how we move students in school. There's definitely a benefit to this of being in a class with 12 to 15 students. We see benefits for small class sizes. We see benefits of relationship building. We see benefits when students are anxious about returning to school and how can we minimize some of that anxiousness. Also, schools will look different. We're going to have to do things with paths of travel and different expectations in school of how we interact. And what better opportunity to do it than with smaller groups of students? Face coverings will be required for students and staff. We are going to do our best to limit student transitions as much as possible. At the elementary school, there might be opportunities where our specials teachers come to the classroom so that we're limiting our students having to travel to those other locations. We know that as we move to middle school and high school, there are more transitions that are going to occur, and we want to make sure that we can safely help students transition to those other classes. Students with special needs may attend school four days a week or possibly five. We're looking at as those as options as well. Attendance will be taken five days a week. Assigned passive travel inside schools outside classroom as much as possible. We know that that's weather permitting, especially in Illinois. No outside visitors or volunteers. Hand sanitizer readily available in all classrooms. Increased cleaning and disinfecting. Bus drivers wearing masks. Anyone entering buildings or buses will self-certify they are symptom-free. And an increased opportunity and reminders for frequent handwashing. Next slide, please. We've heard many comments about remote learning, and we've heard a lot of frustrations about remote learning and that, how that we went into remote learning at the end of, well, in March of last school year. There was a lot of frustrations from both our parents, our community members, our students, as well as our staff with some guidance that was provided at that time. Many parents probably heard the guidance that students could not have a lower grade than where it was on March 13th when school left. And parents were concerned about engagement and attendance and how often students were doing work. So we did want to talk a little bit about how is it different? So parents know for remote learning, students will be assessed and issued grades regardless of the instructional setting. All student work will count towards performance level. Ongoing engagement will be expected and closely monitored. There will be an increase in professional learning regarding best practices for our staff. Students should expect an average of five hours of learning activities daily. This will be done through asynchronous and synchronous learning. These will be much more common words that you hear. Asynchronous learning is an approach where teachers and students are not online at the same time, but that the teacher provides learning resources and tasks so students can access at any time. And synchronous learning is an approach where teachers and students are online at the same time. Many people refer to this as kind of the Zoom opportunities and those types of situations where they are seeing face-to-face or being engaged at the same time. And the teachers typically provide that learning at a set time. Next slide. In addition to the A-B-C schedule, we wanted to provide an online academy. This is where all instruction is delivered online. We've heard from many parents who are afraid to send their child back to school under any circumstances. Seeing what's happening in a nation right now, we're also worried that those numbers could rise as we see that some infection rates are rising in different states. The online academy will be made available to all students. Students must register for a full semester by August 1st, 2020. Staffing limits students not selected this option after August 1st, 2020. With that, we are seeing challenges in planning when we don't know how many students exactly we're dealing with for the different situations. If we know how many students are registering for the online academy, it will tell us exactly how many students we know we're bringing in person and how we can safely bring them in person and support those students, the teachers, and the families. Course selection for the online academy may be a little bit more limited than on-campus offerings, especially at the high school level with how many different choices we offer. And the online academy will consist of both synchronous and asynchronous learning, just as you would see in a remote learning type of situation. Next slide, please. For our special education students, we have heard, we've heard you and the concerns, and as with all students, special education students will have the option to attend in-person or remotely. We're trying to work out a plan where all early childhood students, self-contained students, step students, and Wheatland Academy and the Team 102 environment students come for learning on campus on a daily basis. We will need to host some early childhood classes at Graham Elementary School. Job training sites will be suspended for at least the first semester. We understand that many students in these groups may have a medical exemption to wearing a face mask. It is possible that in some classrooms, the majority of students will not be wearing a mask or a face covering. It creates an even more important opportunity for us to ensure our physical distancing. And IEP meetings will be held remotely. Our next slide, preparing for circumstances. The Illinois State Board of Education stated, "School districts must be prepared to transition all students to remote learning on a temporary or more long-term basis due to Illinois transitioning back to Phase III or Phase II. Identified case of COVID-19 requiring isolation for individual or those in close contact." This is especially important, why we are trying to minimize the amount of other students who may be in close contact to other students for any extended periods of time. Or if schools have to be closed for deep cleaning. Next slide, please. I think when we look at both our portrait of a graduate as well as what we're trying to promote through social-emotional learning, and when you look at the concepts in there, flexibility and adaptability, resilience, creativity and innovation, communication, citizenship, critical thinking and problem-solving, these are all things that I think are going to be vitally important and what we must continue to prepare our students. And when you look at it from a social-emotional learning standpoint with self-management, self-awareness, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making, we feel like these are even more important while we're dealing with what we're dealing with as a nation. From here, we do anticipate ongoing communication. Registration, we are asking parents to please register starting the week of July 20th through August 1st. It's important for us to know how many students will be attending both in-person or in the online academy. If you're enrolling in the online academy, you will be enrolling in, it's a district program. You might be a student at Granger who has a teacher from Fisher who might be doing that instruction. Or a Matia Valley student who might have a teacher from Niqua Valley student. We want that to be clear as you register so that we can look at the numbers and how many students we'll have in person and how many students we'll be teaching online so we can appropriately staff for both situations. Also, as soon as possible, I believe either after this meeting or starting tomorrow, we will be taking all of the frequently asked questions and posting them on ipsd.org and we'll be updating them frequently. We know there will be many questions, and we're going to continue to work through those questions to support our students, to support our staff, to support our entire community as we work through this. With that, I'm going to turn back to Dr. Tally really quick so he can close on this and then we can take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. To everybody, we are dealing with complex constellation of issues as we finalize our plans. There are no easy solutions. Over the next few weeks, we will be gathering more information, digging deeper into the issues, and finalizing our plans so that we can present at the August 3rd meeting. I applaud my team on the work they have done and continue to do. I'll be talking with parents and students and staff over the next couple of weeks to gather their input. And then later on this evening, a letter will go out to the community about these plans and provide details that were discussed. It's important that we continue to reflect, revise, and rewrite our plan so that we continuously improve our outcomes. Mr. President, back to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Dr. Tally. Board members, questions, comments?
Mike, can I add on one thing with the registering? I apologize.
Sure, Doug.
We did have a certain percentage of parents who have already registered. We are going to ask our parents during this time to reregister. They do not have to go through the entire registration process. There's just a small part where we want to ensure whether they're choosing to come in person or the online academy. So parents who've already registered, please look at that information when you receive it so that you can complete that final part of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Hey, Mike, can I ask Doug to just, I know he touched on it in the beginning, and Doug, I was wondering if you could just maybe give a one-minute synopsis. You know, the online learning, the e-learning was not what we wanted or we expected or the expectations we have of ourselves. And I will make the argument that we are the best at e-learning in the state of Illinois, and our hands were significantly tied on how we could operate things and what the ramifications were around that. Can you just briefly touch on, you know, because I know my older kids who did ELO and e-learning, and it's extremely rigorous, and there are quite a few things they have to be accountable for on a daily basis and responsible for. Can you just clarify that again, you know, because I know there are some people that are going to be looking at that option, and I'm sure there'll be more information, but I just wanted you to touch on that briefly.
Sure, thank you, Board Member Rising. You know, when, you know, we had prepared an e-learning plan, you know, prior to last year that we envisioned might be used for a day or two if we had some pretty severe weather. Nobody really anticipated that we would end the school year this way. And so there was a shift, and the state looked at giving guidance on how can we provide distance learning or remote learning? If you remember, during that time, there was also a period of time where school districts weren't really providing anything because they went in to try to plan for what to do. I'll be honest, we did feel there was a point of there where our hands felt a little bit tied at the same time. Just as our parents were frustrated when they heard that students wouldn't be getting lower grades after March 13th, I know our own staff started to worry about accountability during that time. And how do we hold students accountable if they know that their grade's not going to go down? How, why are they gonna, you know, complete the activities, complete the projects, go online when we ask them to be online? And so that did create a concern. We also were switching in the middle of many stressful things going on, including the pandemic itself and nobody really being ready for something like that to happen. One of the things that did come out through the ISBE guidance is that there's going to be an expectation that no matter what environment in, that students are going to be responsible and teachers and school districts will be responsible for five hours of learning on a daily basis for students. And so there's going to be expectations similar to what you've seen with the online academy or ELO in which both synchronous and asynchronous opportunities where we can still expect students and hold them accountable for work that's going to need to be done so that we can continue to move forward and meet the goal. Our goal, once again, that was on our earlier slide, was to support a comprehensive educational program for the 2020-21 school year within the guidelines provided by local, state, and federal health and safety officials. We want to help our students continue to thrive, and we, you know, we are expecting for remote learning to look different. When we were waiting for ISBE guidance, which was frustrating, waiting all the way until June 23rd to get that guidance, there were some things we could start working on. How does remote learning look different? What kind of professional development do we need to support our teachers? You know, we had to start looking at, what will this look like and how will it be different for next year? Because there were frustrations, not just among parents and students, but also about our own staff and how they felt that that went. And so we started to work on those, and we're continuing to work on those to ensure that it is different experience for our families for next year. Did I answer your question, Board Member Rising?
Yes, thanks. I just wanted to ask that one upfront. I'll ask more later.
Other board members, please? Other board members, please? Mr. Rising, I guess?
Can I speak?
Yes, I can't see you, Justin, so just chiming in, Board members, I'm sorry.
Okay. Great plan. Thank you, administration. I think it's a, it's a good starting off point. It provides some framework. I, I questioned some of the leadership at the state and federal level. It would have been helpful to have a task force with the appropriate governmental agencies, the CDC, Department of Education, the State Departments of Education, the teachers' unions, the national parent PTAs, the National Board of School Boards, business representatives, et cetera. However, I'm not acting as an expert here in politics, but as a policymaker. So, we're dealing with the guidance from the Illinois State Board of Education. That guidance uses the word possible 62 times in various forms. As possible, as is possible, to the greatest extent possible, whenever possible, where possible, it may be possible. So, that's what's guiding us in moving forward. We've got 58 days until school is planned to start. And the state has provided us no additional funds to deliver. The federal government has given us $40 per student additional funds to assist us. Executing this pant, this plan and any plan is going to be very challenging. We must recognize though that we will not be returning to a pre-virus operation as we are not in a post-virus environment yet. I empathize with all of our school community members as we adjust to operating during a pandemic. We do have a great school community and we're all fortunate for that. We need to reframe the conversation from fear to risk management. We have to weigh the risks. We all have to do on a society level, as a school, on a personal level, as a teacher, support staff, parent, student. This isn't going away. There's always risk. Nobody wants to come to school if it isn't safe. Now, what is safe? Safe is, safety is multi-dimensional. There's legal, economic, medical, scientific, political, there's temporal, spatial, social, contractual, practical, based on age, there's secondary and tertiary effects, there's intended and unattended consequences. I am looking forward to delivering good education to our school community. It's going to be an uphill battle, but I'm glad that we're in this community to do it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Carubas. Other board members? Ms. Stani, you?
I'm unmuted. Okay. So, thank you very much, administration. This is an incredibly challenging time and I know yourselves, as well as all of us and me personally and all the board members have been consuming every piece of literature, every news report, every medical report we can see. No one knows what the right answer is and no one, we can't make 100% of the people happy here. We, we need to make our kids safe. We need to give them a great educational experience. Our district has been known to be very innovative and creative and we've had to because look at our budget situation. You know, we can come up with a lot of other alternative solutions, but we also don't want to jack up our taxes and we don't want to cause our community more pain financially than they have to pay right now to, to be in this district. I support having options for the students. We need to provide that for the parents who are not comfortable with sending their children to school in any way, shape or form. And I want to be safe rather than sorry. So, give people the option and, you know, let's, let's see how it works. And as Dr. Tally and Doug have mentioned, we are going to have to adapt as things change because you know that they will be changing and they'll be changing rapidly. I mean, even putting this presentation together this week, every day it was, here's a new slide or here's some new information that we're going to consider and incorporate. So, I encourage everyone to get online and register so that we can understand where you want your children placed so that we can start putting more and more pieces together. And there are tons and hundreds and hundreds of pieces to put together here. So, you know, this framework was needed today, but it's the start of a much bigger set of discussion and items for us. So, one thing that I would ask Doug or Dr. Tally to speak to is our thoughts right now about busing.
So, I just want to clarify, are you meaning how many children can be on the bus?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So, the, the guidance we have received is saying that we can have 50 children on a bus. And so that's the guidance we are using. It is the information that other school systems are using as well. And so it is, it is interesting. We know about the 50 kids on the bus. They won't be six feet apart, but that, we have asked for more clarity to explain how that can be, but that is what we are using. I don't know, Doug, if you need to say more about that?
Sure. You know, some of the, you know, we have asked parents which parents would be willing to provide their own transportation to school. The ISBE guidance did recommend or encourage you to encourage your parents who could provide transportation to do so. So, we are trying to look at what are ways to reduce the amount of students who need the transportation. We've, kudos also to our transportation department for trying to look at how we can reduce those numbers on the buses. In addition, trying to look at how can we look at families that we could expect to maybe sit together on the bus and then provide some distance between those students from the same household and students from another household as we're trying to transport kids. So, even within, we, we do think it, you know, there are some things that many of us also questioned on how they can say that this is fine in this situation, but not fine in this situation has been frustrating. But we still are trying to do the same thing to get as much so, physical distinct, distancing as possible between students even on transportation.
Thank you.
Also, the thing, the thing that I know about our buses, Lori, is that we didn't have that many routes that we already had 50 kids on. And if we're splitting up, well, first of all, you've got to take the 20% that could potentially be doing online academy, then you're down to 80%, but that's not even all the kids that take buses and then we're splitting that in half. So, you know, the, like Dr. Tally said, the, the maximum capacity that they're saying with this is 50 kids, but you know, I, I'm sure we will monitor that. We'll see nowhere near that on some of our buses.
Correct.
Ms. Deming, do you have questions or comments?
I know, one, maybe one question, just to comment though first. You know, incredibly appreciative for everything and the commitment our staff and administration has made and I share with Dr. Tally appreciation for he working so hard even prior to getting here with our previous administration and I expressed appreciation to, to Dr. Sullivan as well and working together. But the staff and administration has done a phenomenal job under an extremely difficult time and the need for our community to please appreciate and, and many have expressed that appreciation for the, the time and the input and the research and the back and forth with so many at the federal, state and local levels. So, please know that and hopefully it's been communicated that our district, their very first concern is the safety of our students, our staff and families. And that certainly is driving the decision-making to ensure that the educational opportunities and education that we provide and within this district is at the highest levels while certainly maintaining and keeping foremost in mind the safety of all within the district. The one, one question that, that I would ask, if you'd just share a little bit, is ensuring those, how will we ensure that those students that do come, that are not at school on those days, how will we be able to still provide meals for those families and students that depend on meals when they are at school?
Great question, Board Member Deming, thank you. We do have a plan in place so that students, the day that they are in school, they would be able to take grab and go kind of meals with them for the following day, both from a lunch and if they qualify for breakfast, for breakfast as well on those days or depending on how many days they might not be there, that they still have access to those meals. For students who are in the online academy, if they still need food, we will provide, be providing something similar. My understanding is we'll be providing something similar like we did for the summer program where people can still pick up those meals so that they have that food service during the school year.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you. Ms. Grover?
I wanted to thank the administration for the outstanding job you, you have done. The thought that has gone into this, slide six, if we could go to slide six. Or maybe it was, was the framework slide, was that five and? That was six. There, that one. This slide, I think you captured all the nuances and it just shows the thinking that went behind it. I mean, you hit on everything, the curriculum is important, staff, the SEL, everything. And I really appreciate it, even you thought about not having half-days because I know that was one of the parental concerns was they wanted full days. So, really appreciate that. One thing I think that would help parents decide whether they want the online academy or the, the two days is if, I don't know if you have figured it out as yet, but the two days that the kids are at home, the students are at home, would they be learning the same material as the students in the classroom or how would that work?
We're still working through the plans on what those days would look like. There's, you know, there's different options. That's why we have teams of teachers that we're also working with on what does this look like now because we have even more, you know, intentional work on figuring this out. We're exploring many different options. There could be the part of, you know, you have the 12 to 15 students, the small group of students that you're working at that day where they're getting that direct instruction for the teacher, but then the teacher's going to be providing them with assignments to be working on the following day or it could be videos to watch for another lesson the following day or those types of things. And that's where you come into that asynchronous type of learning. And so, and vice versa for those other students. And so, some people have asked questions and, and things we're exploring is, is there any way for students to be listening to what the teacher's doing in class that day while they're teaching to the other students? We're, we're exploring all possibilities right now, but we're, we're aggressively trying to work through that. We needed to come up with this framework or outline for the plan so that we can continue to work specifically on how those situations would work. It's also why, you know, that C-Day, I know you said two days a week, it could be three days a week for many students, depending on what that C-Day looks like. So, we're also trying to work through, how do we continue to support students on that C-Day as well? So, that's what they could expect. You know, we, we know we're going to also find ourselves in situations where we do have someone who has tested positive and then would need remote learning for a period of time, possibly 14 days or because of someone else in their house who might have that. So, we know that at any given time, we're going to have to shift to that as well and figure out how do we provide that same learning experience or as close to it as possible for those students.
The other thing I wanted to say, I know volunteers are not allowed to come into the school, but we have a plethora of volunteers, PTAs, and I don't know if we can work with them somehow to perhaps help the teacher and have small groups and help with the excess reading or excess help that, support that is needed. We can leverage those great organizations we have. So, thanks.
Yeah, one of the challenges is, and the reasons that some of the guidance talked about limiting volunteers and that is just to try to reduce the number of people that we are sending into the buildings to help us ensure the physical distancing as well as, you know, whether other people, you know, when we look at contact tracing and, you know, limiting the number of people who could come in contact with students and where the virus could be spread. I do agree that we have great community support that could really help in trying to support our students and especially helping, like you said, to get groups into smaller groups. I, I, you know, from an educational standpoint, I'm very excited about class sizes being, we've all talked about class sizes and have spoken on classes sizes for some time. So, there are some benefits to this. I think a lot of our educators will be excited about having those class sizes that are going to be much smaller than what they're used to at the same time. But I, as we evaluate and reevaluate, we will try to keep our options about other areas that we could turn to for support.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Ms. Pio?
Yeah. I, I do support our plan at this point. I'm, I'm just going to say what I relayed to Dr. Tally. The devil is in the details with this plan, obviously, and as we hear the presentation and hear the questions, the details could become overwhelming, I think, at times. So, I appreciate that the plan is fluid and that we are planning on continually re-examining it. Because some of those details, it's the kids that, how do they interact? And they're kids and sometimes they're very unpredictable. So, I'm very pleased with the presentation, the thought, but I, I recognize having to work in the schools myself that this is going to be a very tough road. I'm just imagining one example of, oh, was, how many kids were less than six feet away from that teacher who has now come down with a COVID positive test? How are we going to keep track of that kind of a thing? And so, when I say, whoa, that's, that's a lot of details to be keeping track of. I, you know, I'm, I'm in New Jersey right now and we went to the beach yesterday and they are practicing a lot of safety measures in New Jersey. So, there was a limited number of people that were actually allowed on the beach and, you know, we, we were too late for that. But we were on the boardwalk where there was not a limited number of people allowed. And we're watching people talk and have fun and truly, you know, you get caught up in the moment, I think, and people forget that COVID is going on. So, I, we're dealing with that culture right now in our society that it's hard to feel like the urgency of being safe is, is as high as it should be because we want to just have our normal lives back. So, it's so complex. I, I, I do want to point out, if you could go to the survey results from the staff and the teacher and the parents and community, especially their first and second choice. the teacher and the parents and community, especially their first and second choice, those numbers are so similar. I, you know, I just see that is where people are at. They want to get their lives back to normal. And I appreciate that survey and I appreciate that our plan reflects what that survey results show. However, how we feel is not necessarily what science will say is the best steps to take. So, and in the end, we all got to look in the mirror and say, did we make the best decisions that we could ever make? Because we don't want to feel like we are responsible for the people losing their lives. We don't want to feel responsible for people losing their incomes. I mean, we have so many different things to weigh here. But I, I guess my feeling is very cautiously approving the plan and approving the steps we're taking. But going forward, I've heard from some of the, you know, responses and surveys to, which were tremendous to do that, people realized we had 243-page PowerPoint to look at for the responses from the parent surveys. So that's pretty incredible. It, knowing what our parameters are when something changes and, and being cautious that we're not only relying on what the state is saying, because the state seems to be saying a lot of different things. Justin is right, that if possible, should not be called a requirement. That just does not make sense. A requirement is a requirement, a guideline is maybe is possible, but a requirement, you can't have the word if possible in the same sentence. So how do we navigate this and how do we decide when, you know, we've had cases coming up too often for our own feeling of responsibility for our staff and our students and our community? Because everybody goes home to their own families and to their jobs. So, but really, I would like to have a little more information about the guidelines, about our guidelines or what our parameters are when things get sticky.
Hey Mike, I'll make my comments quick. So I'm not going to ask questions, Doug, because I've already asked you guys probably way too many questions, I think 50 or more. But I did want to echo what Kathy said too, you know, I know all of us board members. Like Kathy said, we had a 243-page, you know, responses from parents and I'm sure all of us read that. We had over 100 pages from staff members and comments. And mind you, this was 10-point font too. So, you know, I spent the whole weekend reading all of those comments. We deeply care and we want to do this the right way. But I will echo what a lot of my fellow board members said is that we need to communicate, we need to over-communicate, we need to communicate as frequently as possible, just like we were communicating when this happened back in March, we're giving constant updates, we need to communicate just as much. Because remember, you know, these parents who want to choose the online academy option have to make that decision by August 1st. But it goes one step further than that because I want to make sure that staff understands what their day is going to look like. I want staff to be comfortable, I want our teachers to be comfortable, I want parents to be comfortable what that day is going to look like and the students as well. So, you know, I want to paint that picture of how that online learning looks and how that AB schedule looks. And it's extremely important, we put that out there, and if people check their email, they received an email from our wonderful communications director at about 9:10, so about 20 minutes ago. So the plan is there that we talked about tonight, but I just want to make sure that we are over-communicating this and being as proactive as possible. Yes, more details are going to come out, we didn't want to overburden everybody with the details tonight. And listen, this isn't ideal, you know, it's not what I want as a parent, it's not what I want as a board member. You know, it's not what I want for my kids, it's not what I want for our educators and our teachers. You know, it wasn't the education I had planned for, for our district. But here's the thing, I truly believe with all my heart, we have the best superintendent, we have the best district administrators, we have amazing teachers that have shown they go above and beyond the call of duty, our support staff, our nurses, our lunch workers, our bus drivers. If I have confidence in anybody making this happen, it's those people. And remember, our job as a board member, yes, our mission statement is to inspire all students to achieve their greatest potential. So it is focused on academics. But if you look at our district goals, there's a huge socially emotional part on there and I'm not losing sight of that. We need to have that for our kids. But overall, over all those things, and we don't mention it that much, but here's the thing, safety. It's the safety of our kids and our staff. And, you know, we have to look at that and think about that. Is it ideal? No, but we have to try to take as many precautions while still having things relatively as normal as possible. And hopefully as time goes on, a lot of these things will lighten up. But, you know, I'm confident that we're making the best decisions and like Dr. Tally said and Doug said, this is going to be fluid. But, you know, I'm asking our district administration to communicate, please, to staff and parents as much as possible. So, thank you, Mike. Thanks.
Thank you. My comments, thank you for the framework. I agree with Kathy, the devil is in the details. I'm wondering if you can address now, and I know you will address later, things like what we heard from the public comment in terms of like our encore classes, our special classes, things like band, chorus, orchestra, you know, some of our shop classes. Have you thought through that yet? Are we still more to come?
We are working through, we have definitely started the thought process and actually working through a lot of those things and tying them to the guidance. Our plan right now, when students come, you might have heard of some school districts that they're coming every other day and they're coming for a shortened day. Our expectation right now is that they are coming for a full day and that they're going to their different courses. We know how important those courses are for our students. Some of them, that's the coursework that they might be looking forward to when they come to school. And so we look at that from a socially emotional standpoint. Will those classes look different? Yes. There are going to be some things that we have to just do differently. You know, one of the, part of the guidance was not sharing objects or trying to avoid sharing objects. So, you know, that makes art class look a little bit different, that makes music class look a little bit different, or shop class, or some of those CTE classes. So things, and we're aggressively trying to work through that, we don't have all the answers right now, but we want our students to have that full experience. Yes, it'll be with less students in the classroom, there's going to definitely be some creativity and innovation to make it work. We're also looking at what additional things do we have to purchase to get in place? If we're expecting students not to share pencils or not to share, you know, textbooks or different resources, we're looking at what do we need to do to still provide a comprehensive educational opportunity for our students? It will look different and we're doing our best to try to prepare for that. I can't tell you today exactly what it's going to look like for each of those areas. I know with PE, we're going to be encouraging students to get outside weather permitting and different things like that. You know, we're looking at what are things art-wise that students can have their own set of, that way they can use it in school or at home if we shift to remote learning. So there will be some things that look different while we still try to meet those curricular expectations.
Thank you. I look forward to our August 3rd meeting. Hopefully we can get more into the details. My final comment is this, as evidenced by our survey comments, our public comment today, it's clear, we have, we're coming from different points of views and different opinion. I think together, I think we've had over 4,000 views already. The one thing that we all agree is that our number one priority is what's best for our children. And I know together, we can get our kids back to school, together, we can get back to normal. And we need to continue to work together and continue the dialogue in order that we can do what's best for our children. So on behalf of the board, thank you administration for all the work. I know it's been going on since April, I appreciate the framework. As you know, you still have a little bit more to do, so thank you so much. And with that, I'm going to go to the next discussion item, which is the legislative update. We don't have one, so that moves that along. Board of Education update, I'm going to ask Ms. Demming to briefly share what's happening with our equity work.
As you know, our last meeting, we have finalized our submission for our board equity statement. That has been shared with, officially shared with Dr. Tally and our executive director of equity, and that is going to be forwarded to district constituencies in order to ensure that they are in line with that statement. We've asked for that feedback to come back to us by the beginning of August so that at our August 10th meeting, we can revisit, hopefully, if they're, well, we can see what happens by, when we come back together by August 10th. But our goal is to begin moving forward on inclusion of policy and discussion work with the entire stakeholders that represent IPSD 204.
Thank you, Susan. Justin gave a great commercial at the beginning of our meeting. Ms. Donahue is our board representative for IPEF. Again, you may notice that you either see IPEF in the background or many board members wearing those lovely yellow shirts to support IPEF, Ms. Donahue.
So yeah, I'm going to build on what Justin said. IPEF has been around for a long time. It's a not-for-profit that supports many great programs in our school district. And I always talk to people about two things when I talk about IPEF. First of all, why do we need it? And second, what do they do? So why do we need it? You saw our budget discussion earlier and I still think there's a lot of people on this call, so this is important. We are funded about 80% of adequacy for the state of Illinois requirements for education and we run our budget very tightly. That's why our teachers are paid less than the average in the state and why our class sizes are large. So we don't have a lot of extra money sitting around to do some of the creative things that we would like to do in our district, and that's where IPEF comes in. They're a fundraising organization that gathers money and funds some really fantastic work in our district. Last year, they funded 53 very creative teacher grants for new ideas. They fund Young Hearts for Life to check our high school students for heart issues, the Fine Arts Festival, the robotics tournaments and robotics clubs in many of our schools. And also, very importantly these days, they fund, help finance our families in the district who are struggling financially. And there's no more important time than now for that. We are in great need for everyone to really consider donating. I know everyone on the school board, as Mike said, has their yellow on, but not only are they supportive of IPEF by wearing their shirt, they all have given their time and money to support IPEF for this district. So I know we have a very generous and gracious community and I'm telling you that we need you to really consider clicking the box to donate when you register your child for the district or going to the IPEF website and donating on that site. So without your help, we're not going to be able to have these special projects. So thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Any other comments from board members?
So my background is my practice for the upcoming marathon. So that was my practice today was one mile.
There you go. Anyone else? All right, with that, please identify yourself as you make your motion or second. I need a motion to adjourn.
Justin Carubis, motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second, or Susan, either one.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.